Zoom, you have mute.
I will like to call the seven o'clock select board meeting to order. Karen, immediate. First, we'll start off with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America.
The United States of America and to the public. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, that was you.
It's from God.
That was Melissa, not Jane on the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Alright, so I will go overview the meeting. Seven oh, seven oh five, public comment for any items not on the agenda. Please, I'll go over that when we get to it. Seven fifteen, Town Manager Report, seven twenty, Community Spotlight. Seven twenty-five, Discuss and Vote on Internal Borrowing Related to Killam School, Reading Center for Active Living and Birch Meadow Phase Two Projects. Seven thirty-five, Discuss Potential Override Budget Review, Possible Ways to Increase Revenues Through Review of Field Advertising, Short-Term Rentals and Accessory Dwelling Units, Rules and Regulations. Eight oh five, A Public Hearing Discussing Vote on a Transfer of an Alcohol Restaurant License to Florida Coal Fired Pizza LLC DBA Anthony's Colt Fired Pizza Located at Forty-Eight Walkers Per Drive. Eight fifteen, Discuss Forming a Water and Sewer Rate Advisory Committee. Discuss at eight twenty-five, Discuss Communication Tracking Methods. Eight thirty, Select Board Liaison Reports Hopefully. Eight thirty-five, Future Agendas. And eight forty, Discuss and Vote on One Set of Minutes. So first up is public comment. Please keep it to two minutes and you can speak also on the public Karen thing as well if people are here for that. Kids, anybody, we have the scouts here, by force or not, they all look at me. Anybody on Zoom, Maddie? Melissa's on Zoom, other than her.
I should do a roll call.
I am not seeing any hands on Zoom and I have the timer ready to go.
There it is, just got the timer ready to go.
Alright, you can time me at some point, please. I'll bring it on you, save your attention, please. Running fast meetings, let's go. Alright, so we will move on to seven fifteen, Town Manager Report. Matt, take it away.
Hey, thank you. Just a couple of items for tonight. First of all, we've, as I mentioned last time, we've completed the process for becoming a green communities. We will receive our official designation from the state. At event in the last meeting, I didn't have the date of the event. This meeting, I have the date. It is August twenty-first, from ten AM to eleven AM in the common. We've put this information on the website and Facebook, so I hope everybody could come. You know, this was a years-long effort by a lot of people, so it's gonna be a major milestone for the community, so. I'll be reminding people again. And also, I reminded people last meeting, but as we start to discuss budgets, I wanted to mention that we've scheduled the first financial forum with the Finance Committee. That is gonna be on a Wednesday, September seventeenth, at seven PM at the library. And that will sort of officially kick off our FY twenty-seven budget process. So more on that meeting to come, but those are two important highlights for the summer.
Seventeenth, you said?
Seventeenth, at seven PM at the library. And Jane did a fantastic job covering for me when I was on vacation for the last couple of weeks, I appreciate that. And she has a couple of items, if that's okay to add to the report.
Of course, go ahead, Jane.
Thank you, thank you very much. Couple of things. I met with the MBTA and the delegation last week while Matt was out of office. And that was the very first preliminary step as they're doing their studies and coming back to doing public engagement in the community. My understanding is that they will be meeting with the Police Chief and the Fire Chief next, and Matt and I. And then they're planning a public engagement session for early September, which will be a remote session and there'll be an in-person area, I think in the community room at the library, for folks who don't wanna attend remotely, which I think is also an accessible option for folks. And then after they go through their public engagement process, they will come, if, at the board's pleasure, back to the board here with perhaps a more narrowed focus, since they will have already been answering questions with the public. And they can come before this board, answer your questions. And then only after they go through that process will they be filing, if they intend to at that point, an NOI with the Conservation Commission. So we are actively engaging with them to get for, get as much information as we can and encourage them to have as many meetings as possible with our residents. The Jenna and myself and other staff are beginning our work, a little bit more developed work on the operations plan for the Recal Center. When it opens, we will be bringing this plan to the Council on Aging and to the Recreation Committee. And of course, the board here, if you're interested. As we go through, we'll be doing it iteratively and soliciting feedback from both of those boards as we develop this process. We have some time to do that and we wanna do a thorough job and get that right. And then some good news, we have received five proposals for our rubbish and recycling contract. That came in on Thursday. So we are, staff are starting to do that review of the proposals. We will rate and rank them. We are starting to check references. I'm very encouraged by the companies that sent in proposals. We have not opened the price proposals yet, we will do that later. And we will fully inform the board and come before you with much more information. Okay? Thank you.
Thanks, Jane. Yep. Thanks. Do we, do, do we, do you, Matt or Jane, have MWRA Board, whatever the name of that board is, are they giving you an update? I know it hasn't been a long time, but no update yet?
No update. We are still crafting a letter back to them. We wanted to develop some historic information and give it our best shot, maybe our last shot at this point. So I've been in contact with Paul and we're working on that and hopefully get that out soon, so. But I haven't heard anything from them, so. Alright, thanks.
Anyone else? Karen?
Yes. So, so I understand that the Eastern Gateway Focus Group was successful, but I'm wondering, was it recorded? Was there an agenda? Is there a summary of the meeting minutes that's like where members could get a handle on and see what topics were discussed?
The, I don't know which meeting you're talking about.
Well, I had it in my schedule for next last Wednesday, but apparently it required an RSVP, so it wasn't published. Eastern Gateway.
Oh, this, this, the small group, yeah.
It was town meeting, members.
And town meeting members, but, so I kind of, I walked away from this meeting, it was in my calendar, and I just assumed it would be public and because of, you know, certainly I don't want it to be us five, you know, that's why I kind of ignored the RSVP, but then when it wasn't published, I couldn't participate. So, just as a follow-up, I understand it went well and I'm looking for a recording or meeting minutes or something.
Okay, I'll follow up with that. Thank you.
Chris, oh, sorry, yes, Karen.
Is it possible for us to either move the liaison reports up so that we can get an update on RCTV? Is that part of Melissa's liaison report? Because I've had a lot of people ask me for an update.
It probably will, I guess she can just tell me now, she has a meeting. Well, go ahead. You can just give the update real quick, Melissa.
We've had several meetings over the past couple of months and we have another meeting tomorrow. I don't really have any information to put out there yet, just because we really, we've been going back and forth with RCTV, but I would say it's moving along. And again, we have another meeting tomorrow with them.
So I guess I just wanna make sure we don't run out of time and get too.
We've been meeting, we've had, uh, we are putting the work in. We've met, I'd say, four or five times and now we have one meeting for the next three weeks coming up, so.
One meeting every week.
Okay.
One meeting every week, I apologize, sorry.
And are you proposing things that should be in the contract on behalf of the board and then you'll present it to the full board at a later date?
Yes, not just me. Jane and Matt are involved in it as well, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, no, it's not just me, it's me, Matt, Jane, and then the individuals they've selected for their negotiation team.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, to follow up, I just, I don't wanna understand the things that are on the table that are significant changes at the last minute. I think the Select Board should have a little more insight into things that are being discussed.
I'd be happy to bring that up at the meeting tomorrow, but I don't feel comfortable laying anything out on the table today, tonight, because nothing's been agreed upon on our side or their side. So I don't think it would be fair of me to say anything tonight, but I'd be happy to discuss it with the committee tomorrow and see what I can bring for an update.
Yeah, maybe we could get that before our next meeting. I just, so when we designate a liaison to go and represent us, we are used to, before anything is.
I, I understand how a liaison works, but these are contract negotiations and neither side has agreed upon anything. So I don't think it's appropriate of me to give an update for issues that are not agreed upon by us or RCTV. I don't think that's fair.
I asked what things were being discussed. These are, have nothing to do with what's been agreed upon, but I asked about things that were being discussed that are different from the current contact, contract. We had a lot of discussions in public about things that we might be open to, but to Karen.
Pretty much everything that was in the old contract is being rewarded.
I'm still talking. So just, so to Karen's point, we appreciate you doing this because it does save time for us. But when we designate somebody to go and do this contract negotiation, that person comes back to us and keeps us fully updated about things that are being discussed. And, and, and so Matt and Jane can help with that as well. So that's great. All three of you are in it.
Yeah, and we have been meeting regularly. We didn't meet the last couple of weeks because a few of us were away, but we're starting again this week and making progress. So we'll have more on that. And we are mindful of the schedule, we know it's a tight schedule, so we're mindful of that as well.
All good?
Yep, thank you.
Okay. So now we'll move on to seven twenty, Community Spotlight.
Okay, just a couple of quick things. I wanted to give a spotlight to a group called Next Step Ministry Volunteers. Our Conservation Officer originally recruited this group in two thousand twenty-two to help out on conservation projects. And from the start, they've been nothing but helpful, reliable, truly committed. Their contributions have been substantial. For the trail system alone, they created and built three hundred feet of wooden raised boardwalk at Pine Vale Conservation Area. They built an entirely new fifteen-hundred-foot trail system at Lynella, Lynetta, Lynetta Lane with six wetland crosses over boardwalks, crossings. And they painted the entire inside and outside of the Mittera cabins. They've done a lot of great work. They've installed benches, they've cleared invasives, they spread wood chips, helped construct the new twenty-four-by-twenty-four deck that's right behind the cabin. And that'll be completed very soon. And I understand they're gonna come back next year and, and there's more projects planned. So I just wanna give a shout-out to that group. I understand they're leaving in a couple of weeks. But before they did, I wanted to recognize the impact they had on Reading and on the conservation areas and publicly thank them for their service to the town. So thank you to Next Step Ministries Volunteers. And one quick business note, I wanted to congratulate Marathon Sports. I can't believe it, but they're celebrating their one-year anniversary in Reading already. Having them come to Reading was a big deal and they've really become a staple of our downtown. And they participate regularly in community events. I've seen them at many events personally. And I understand they are planning some sort of one-year celebration for later this month, but early September. So as soon as I get more information on that, on contact with the managers there, I will let you know. But congratulations to Marathon and thank you for being a great partner for our downtown. Okay, and that concludes the spotlight.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
I guess we can, I guess Carlo wants to make a comment to, point of personal privilege per se.
Yes.
Alright, this is kinda weird, but I have some very sad news. Michael Coltman passed away suddenly yesterday. And thoughts and prayers with Judy and the family. And I heard about this a few hours ago, it happened yesterday, and, you know, I gotta stop before I get too emotional. But Michael was a very valued member of this community, founding member of our PPA. You know, toured behind the pickleball courts at Burbank, helped with the elections, town meeting, re, I just, you know, on and on and on. So this is devastating for the Coltman family. And I just wanted to, you know, give my sentiments and share it, because it's very sudden and very sad. So, thank you.
Sharing that, yeah.
Thanks. Yeah, I didn't know Michael as well as anybody else. You know, I was privileged to participate with him, at least advocating for pickleball stuff. But he was a volunteer, obviously, and he was all over the place, so, you know, it's definitely a loss. My thoughts and prayers go out to Judy and her whole family, so. Alrighty. So with that, we will move on to seven twenty-five, Discuss and Vote on Internal Borrowing related to the Killam School, Reading Center for Active Living and Birch Meadow Projects. Sharon, take it away.
Thank you, Chris. So as you might have noticed, in your packet, there was on pages four, five, and six, interning, internal borrowing forms from the DLS. So the DOR or DLS allows us to borrow from our reserves and to keep projects moving before we actually permanently borrow. And when we were working with our bonding agent to try and figure out when to borrow for Killam, for Recal, for Pickleball, for all of this, Birch Meadow and the Fields House floor, we were trying to get a timeline that we could borrow all of them. Because issuing bonds is not an inexpensive process, so you do not wanna do it multiple times. You wanna do it once in a year if you can. So when we did the Fields House floor, I came to you guys with what we call a BAN, which is a bond anticipation note, a short-term borrowing, because we needed to start that project in early June, but it was the only one on that timeline. We borrowed for a nine-month period, and so we were trying to figure out, okay, what's a good timeline to borrow for all the projects? So that it don't, there's only one borrowing, because it can cost forty, fifty thousand dollars to issue the bonds. So you wanna do it just once. So the bonding agent recommended that we do an internal borrowing, which we've never done any of these sizes. But she's like, you have the reserves and basically you're doing, is borrowing your own money and saving on interest. If we borrow in January, there will be no debt payments in fiscal twenty-six related to any of these projects, which helped with the capital planning, because we do five percent of our budget debt and capital. So taking that debt payment and move, or interest payment and moving it to the next year, freed up money to do more paving and other things in the capital area. So it made sense on so many levels, because it saved us interest, allowed us to do a little bit more in fiscal twenty-six related to capital. And it actually makes it so that the debt exclusion votes for Killam and for Recal will not appear on anybody's bill in fiscal twenty-six, they will show up in fiscal twenty-seven, it will start to show up, not all of it. So it kinda gives you a little bit of a, a year of a break to prepare for when that comes onto your bill. And so what we're doing here is filling out the necessary forms that are required by DLS. We have to notify them when we do an internal borrowing. So they are, they are aware that we're using funds that are part of our free cash, part of our stabilization, whatever. And then they can keep track of it so that they know that we repaid it. So what happens is when we permanently borrow, we put the money right back. So it's not a big deal. It saves us on interest and it saves us on debt issuance costs, because sometimes projects are hard to line up to the same timeline. So January was recommended by our bonding agent, and so that was where we went with it, because we felt it had a lot more positives than, I was hoping to borrow in like July or August. But just that, that borrowing in May made me need to do something, you know, and I couldn't do a short-term borrowing for less than six months. So it ended up being like, well, okay, if we do six or nine months, gives me a little leeway, I can do a borrowing in January. Because you can pay off a BAN or you can borrow for a BAN a couple of months prior to its maturity. So that's why January, and that's why you're seeing what you're seeing. These forms look different. We have done them in the past. Internal borrowings are only done for debt issuances, it's just to get the project started prior to the debt being borrowed. And so you can see that the first one we have is for Birch Meadow Phase Two for two, two-point-one-four million dollars. They started that in June, actually, no, they started, I think they said they were gonna start July one with that project. And then six million dollars for Killam and one-point-five million for Recal. And these are based off of the cash flow reports that are given to us by the OPMs, so that we know how much money are we gonna spend from now to January, so that we make sure we put that money aside, that there's cash flow for these projects. And then once we do the borrowing, the money comes right back into our reserves.
Could Maddie just put this up on the screen real quick, so I assume people at home can't see it unless it does, so, just that we have it on. Thank you. Are you good, Sharon?
Yes, I'm good.
Board members, any questions? Melissa, again.
I don't think I have any questions at this point, thank you.
I thought I saw your hand go up. I'm hallucinating.
I think so.
Mary Ann. Maddie's got a new two-minute timer, by the way, so we're gonna beta test with you.
So.
Name and address.
Mary Ann Downing, thirteen Heather Drive, member of the FinCom, and that is the capacity in which I'm asking this question. I've discussed this with the FinCom Chair, and I guess I'd like, we'd like to know why this wasn't raised, this, this borrowing, even if it's temporary, at any recent FinCom meeting.
I had discussed it in public, even at town meeting, where I stated that we would not have any debt exclusion payment on the tax bill because I intended to internal borrow. I also mentioned it again when we talked about the BAN for the, the Fields House floor and that I would be coming back to the Select Board for an internal borrowing.
Yeah, I guess maybe we just didn't realize it was gonna.
It does not require FinCom approval, because it's already been, all of these debts have been approved by FinCom and by town meeting. This is just a timing issue and it only requires a Select Board vote. But it has been mentioned on several occasions, what my, my intent was in terms of when to borrow and how we were gonna borrow, borrowing tranches so that this doesn't hit people's tax bills all at once. I thought I made it clear, but.
Yeah, maybe we just didn't realize, okay, it's gonna be more than half of the free cash. And is there any?
For a few months, we're borrowing in January.
Is there any chance that there would be a delay in January borrowing such that our free cash?
Public comment?
Yes.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm a member of the FinCom and we wanted to understand this. Is, so my, always my concerns, that if it, is there, I'd like it addressed, if there's a chance that this internal borrowing, I guess we didn't know it was gonna be quite this large, that there'd be a chance that it would not get repaid, repaid back?
There's no chance of that, no.
Uh-uh, on time, I mean, like.
It would be paid in January, because that's when we have a planned borrowing. We've already started working with the bonding agent, so they're planning for our borrowing to be in January. And they will, they, they will get us, you know, moving with all the paperwork that needs to happen, because there's a statement of position that goes out, just so that people who are looking to buy bonds know what our financial position is, what our rating is, all of that stuff. We have a bond rating every single time we issue, so all those things have to be lined up. It, it takes a long time to get an issuance, like, out there. It's not like something you can do the day after a vote. And so they told me minimum five weeks to get this out, out there. Even if I wanted to borrow in July, I, I probably would have barely made it in July, because there's a lot that goes on behind the scenes to do it, between our bonding agent, bond counsel, you know, and just this, getting the bond rating done as well and having a report out there. And then they bid it out and then they do a final date that we get our, our bonds issued.
Alright, thank you. I know the timer went off, but I wasn't doing most of the talking. I just wanted to ask one other question, which is, how come we've never done this before to this extent with other borrowing?
Well, it may not have been that we had any issue that we needed to. Timing may have worked out better, but we have done, since I've been here, three or four internal borrowings, but never the size. I was hesitant when the bonding agent had recommended an internal borrowing. She's like, it's just a couple of months and you have plenty of reserves. It makes no sense to, to do more than one borrowing in a year, because like I said, it's forty to fifty thousand dollars at least every time we put a bond, bond issuance out there. So you wanna do them all at once.
Thank you.
Thanks, Karen.
I mean, I, I had a chance to talk to Sharon earlier today and, and I was a little surprised and my phone started ringing as well. So, but, on the other, so I appreciate that, because we just spent a hundred thousand to do a short-term, nine-month borrowing. And I know some of us were pretty shocked that it cost that much, so.
That was interesting, I think, though. That was the interest.
Yep, so I mean, that's just money that's gone. So I appreciate bond agent, counsel, whoever was coming up with this alternative, so that we wouldn't, you know. Bottom line, you have been saying at town meeting that the debt wasn't gonna hit our tax bills for a while and as I kind of internalized it, so now we're seeing the mechanics of how this is gonna do it, but, but then, I think the nine-million-dollar number was big, right? I think we can all agree, so.
In fact, the two-point-one-four, I had hoped to have borrowed that with. My original plan was to borrow Birch Meadow and the floor together at the end of fiscal twenty-five and then borrow for Recal and Killam together in fiscal twenty-six. It just didn't work out that Birch Meadow Phase Two was ready. They didn't know about the numbers and they didn't know if they were gonna have enough and they didn't wanna borrow. And then kept it back to town meeting and realized, you know, maybe they, they don't have the support for the project anymore if it costs more. Do you know what I mean? So that was kind of the, the place we were in. And so this was the alternative.
I think, because I know at least one of our Select Board members raised the, the question, so why are we, you know, why were we borrowing for the high school floor if we have cash? I think that was Melissa, but, and so here's another creative way of, you know, temporarily, you know, why is it good for the taxpayers? Why is it good for not spending money we don't have to spend? And obviously, you've checked with the state, we're doing things that we're supposed to be doing.
Yeah, one of the reasons I could not do this internal borrowing for the. Even if I wanted to borrow in July, I would if I probably would have barely made it in July, because there's a lot that goes on behind the scenes to do it, between our bonding agent, bond counsel, um you know, and just this getting the bond rating done as well, and having a report out there. And then they bid it out, and then they do a final date that we get our our bonds issued.
All right, thank you. I know the timer went off, but I wasn't doing most of the talking. I just wanted to ask one other question, which is, how come we've never done this before to this extent with other borrowing?
Well, it may not have been that we had any issue that we needed to. Timing may have worked out better, but we have done, since I've been here, three or four internal borrowings, but never the size. I was hesitant when the bonding agent had recommended an internal borrowing. She's like, it's just a couple of months and you have plenty of reserves. It makes no sense to to do more than one borrowing in a year, because like I said, it's forty to fifty thousand dollars at least every time we put a bond bond issuance out there. So you want to do them all at once.
Thank you.
Thanks, Karen.
I mean, I um I had a chance to talk to Sharon earlier today, and and I was a little surprised when my phone started ringing as well. Um so but on the other, so I appreciate that, because we just spent a hundred thousand to do a short-term, nine-month borrowing, and I know some of us were pretty shocked that it cost that much, so.
That was interesting, I think, though. That was the interest.
Yep, so I mean, that's just money that's gone. So I appreciate bond agent, council, whoever was coming up with this alternative, so that we wouldn't, you know, uh bottom line, um you have been saying at town meeting that the debt wasn't going to hit our tax bills for a while, and as I kind of internalized it. So now we're seeing the mechanics of how this is going to do it, but but then I think the nine million dollar number was big, right? I think we can all agree, so.
In fact, the two-point one-four, I had hoped to have borrowed that with. My original plan was to borrow Birch Meadow and the floor together at the end of fiscal twenty-five, and then borrow for Recal and Killam together in fiscal twenty-six. It just didn't work out that Birch Meadow Phase Two was ready. Um they didn't know about the numbers, and they didn't know if they were going to have enough, and they didn't want to borrow. And then kept it back to town meeting and realized, you know, maybe they they don't have the support for the project anymore if it costs more. Do you know what I mean? So that was kind of the the place we were in. Um and so this was the alternative.
I think um because I know at least one of our select board members raised the um the question. So why are we, you know, why were we borrowing for the high school floor if we have cash? Um I think that was Melissa, but and so here's another creative way of, you know, temporarily, you know, why is it good for the taxpayers? Why is it good for um not spending money we don't have to spend? And um obviously, you've checked with the state. We're doing things that we're supposed to be doing.
Yeah, one of the reasons I could not do this internal borrowing for the Fieldhouse floor is all internal borrowings have to be paid off by June thirtieth, and we did that internal borrowing in May, so it wouldn't have helped us. Um so it was, there was a reason why we had to do that short-term borrowing. I prefer not to do short-term borrowings if we don't have to, but that's how we had to frame this.
Thank you for coming tonight to explain this.
I don't think there's any other questions.
Oh, you pulled me off my ledge, just letting you know. She pulled me off my ledge and a few other people's ledges, so I appreciate the explanation.
So I just had a a couple of questions. So um can we repeat it? And you said you've done it three or four times in the past, so yes, in the future, only if the stars align correctly, essentially, right?
You know, we only exercise it if we need to. And if 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 everything lines up and we're ready to borrow, we just borrow. It's it's because we had to do that band for the Fieldhouse floor, and that that we had to line it up so the Fieldhouse floor could be borrowed with this money, so we didn't have to borrow more than once. And so that's why we ended up pushing it to January.
Um and then uh this doesn't impact our bond rating or anything, right? Because our free cash still is above whatever it needs to be.
Yeah, and the numbers here would would indicate what's left after the six million dollars came out for fiscal twenty-six. Like as soon as we vote things at town meeting, they come out of free cash. So whatever was voted in at April town meeting to support fiscal twenty-six came out of free cash. Anything we used that evening came out of free cash. So when you see the number that says inappropriate, that's what's left after all is said and done, but does not account for any regeneration that we have for fiscal twenty-five, because it's too soon to have all those numbers finalized, yeah.
And you mentioned that we saved fifty grand by doing this, or a little bit more than that? How much would you?
I would say it's at least fifty grand, because we would have been in a position of borrowing more than once in the year, and it's usually about forty. It could range from forty to seventy grand, to be honest. And so to me, you you line all those up and you do it once.
Yep. Perfect. Anyone else? All right, Karen, you have a motion.
Motion to approve the internal borrowing of nine point six four million dollars for the following projects. Birch Meadow Phase Two, two million one hundred and forty thousand dollars. Killam School, six million dollars. Reading Center for Active Living, one point five million dollars.
Second.
Second by Karen. Any discussion? See none. Roll call, Melissa.
Yes.
Yes, Karen Herer.
Yes.
Karen Roskilde. And Chris Haywood, yes. Five seconds. Thank you, Sharon. All right, moving on to seven thirty-five. Discuss potential override budget review, possibly increase revenues through field advertising, short-term rentals, ADUs, and regulations. Um can someone have something on this? I obviously have my own comments, but Jane, did you want to?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um so we put a few things in your packet as reference materials to sort of get the conversation started. Um there is, let me look at the packet here. We gave you the um the policies that the school department uses, because we've referenced in the past that that our recreation department tends to follow the policy of the schools, so that is in here. And that has uh two relevant pieces, particularly that the school system should not give the public the impression generally endorsing or sanctioning commercial um in fundraising activities. So the district does not particularly wants to give the impression they're endorsing a particular business. Um and then they have another piece on their advertising in schools. It's their policy, K H B is in boy. And that's um no advertising commercial products will be permitted in school buildings or on school grounds without the permission of the superintendent of schools. So that's that piece. Um we also put in your packet um from Andrew a memo that talks about short-term rentals and ADUs. You had asked some of these questions, of course, we wanted to put some of the information in front of you. Short-term rentals, um vis a vis short-term rentals, the town adopted the local room tax at four percent back in nineteen eighty-nine. Um the current tax is uh six percent that most of our peer communities utilize. You can see from Andrew's memo. Um it applies to hotels and short-term rentals, so Airbnb would be part of that. Um we received those revenues from the state. Um Ms. Engstrom gave us the information, which Andrew put into his memo as well, um on what we've received in the last few years. So in twenty twenty-two, the town receives um small, small figures for this. Fifteen thousand, two hundred ninety-one dollars, twenty twenty-three, ten thousand, six hundred ninety-four. Twenty twenty-four was thirteen thousand, five ninety-two, and twenty twenty-five, seventeen thousand, five hundred twenty-eight dollars um in revenue from short-term rentals and taxes. He says that there's an additional three percent community impact fee that can be assessed, but it only triggers if certain scenarios are adopted, and that thirty-five percent of those fees have to go to affordable housing, if the board were to want to look more into that. Um there's information from the Division of Local Services in your packet. Um there are zoning considerations that would need to be made. And then ADUs, um those are coming onboard, as you know. Those would, any development of ADUs would contribute to new growth numbers that we have in town. So those building permits and that new taxable square footage would come in the form of new growth on our. So when you have, you know, your assessments, and then you're prepped two and a half, and then new growth is layered on top of that to reset your new levy. So that is, you know, ADUs would would appear um in our revenue. Um other considerations, I have asked council, town council, to work on developing some considerations for us. Um she is finalizing something more formal that can be presented, but by way of some consideration for the board to take under advisement. Um if we were to go for um selling advertising on fields, then there is a procurement process that has to be um undertaken, because we're soliciting the sale of advertising. Many towns get around this by um adopting a limit of ten thousand dollars, because under ten thousand, we don't have to bid it or anything like that.
Okay.
So that's how some towns address it. Um we have, let's see, the the authority would lie with the town manager for all of the properties that he manages in town, so not RMLD properties, um not the school committee, not the library trustees, those those commissions and boards manage those properties. But the town manager would be the authority to contract those advertisements. Um if the board were to approve a policy and a detailed, really detailed policy would have to be brought forward at some point to be approved. Um we would have to create a process for selection. We would have to determine, we'd have to be very clear that our policy um for the sale uh would not constitute an open forum. We do not want to turn advertising on a public field or um anything like that into what would be considered an open forum. Um then you would have to accept all kinds of advertisement um from any kind of entity. So we would want it to be considered very carefully crafted language. Um and there's some legal citations we can take you through. Um we'd have to uh review the conflict of interest law, all that kind of stuff. Um additionally, I asked Jim Sullivan, our recreation director, um for some insights that he uh is working with, and he said this recently actually came up with the Massachusetts Recreation and Parks Association meeting, um that he's a member of the board of. And so he's just a fantastic resource for the town. We're very lucky to have him. Um so he, things he would want to be considered are who's permitted to advertise. It's that open boarding. I mean, wouldn't, would the board want to have um bars or entertainment locations be considered? We want to limit it maybe just to Reading businesses. Um you know, we, those kind of things, first come, first served basis. What what are you thinking? Um where the advertising would be allowed, so on. Our, a lot of our fields right now, our booster organizations raise money, and they put up their signs on the edge of the fence at the beginning of the game, and they take it down at the end of the game. And so that way, the multiple groups that use those fields, you know, can still sell their, to support their booster organizations, and they, it just is there for the duration of the game and comes down. So if we were to put something on some of those fields, it would be a consideration of, okay, we're blocking, we're taking away, maybe what these booster organizations don't know that the board wants to entertain that. I just want, you know, that's a current practice. Um who would manage the process? As I said, it would be under the authority of the town manager. We would have to create a policy about how that would be done internally. And then we would want to have a standardized sort of sign, so everything sort of looks the same. The name, the name of the business, the language, the phone number, whatever is unique, but there would be no advantage to one business over another. Um we'd be very, very careful and we would, like, what's the font size, what the colors, those kinds of things. Um he says that he would be open to something more like a sponsorship model versus formal advertising, where you could adopt a tennis court or adopt a football court or something like that for a season or for a year. And so that, you know, static image could be displayed in a respectful way. Um he does caution that um in some of our uh our neighborhood parks, having lots of advertising may be um discordant with the neighbors, seeing lots of advertising from their, from their, you know, nice neighborhood parks, a consideration for the board. So that's, that's, I think, some information to get you started on a conversation, and, you know, we live to serve, so we work to serve. Um so we uh we will, you know, whatever questions are raised, we will, you know, engage staff and council to, you know, bring you back something a little bit more structured to work with, but this is just to get the conversation going.
Thanks, Jane. Um yeah, I had a, just a couple of comments on why it puts us on the agenda um going forward, obviously, just more different ways that we can potentially raise revenue and allow, you know, other, when you mentioned who should be on it, like obviously Reading businesses, you know, we have to telescope that would be, you know, we're not going to have seventy-five signs up. It's going to be something within reason and um just limited to size. So just using the a sign out front here kind of thing, whatever regulations they do, they have to pay for that, but they have to be, what, a registered Reading business or something? It's kind of how you. So nonprofits don't pay anything to go out there, right?
They have to pay their own cost for signs.
A kind of um the way that I see it is working with, you know, the rec committee, and then potentially the school committee, um seeing if they're open to it on their kind of locations. Because I know for the high school football games, they do put stuff up and then they take it down. But perhaps, you know, it could be half dozen or whatever that are there for the season, or like, that doesn't run out the other ones. Like, I understand that all these other booster organizations have to have theirs um as well. Just, I think there has to be, you know, we're broaching the subject tonight essentially, um because I know Jen at town meeting uh had brought it up, that there's a bylaw or whatever. So if there's no bylaw, then I didn't hear that. Um this becomes a little bit easier on our end, as opposed to the school committee having to discuss potentially uh their portion. So that's kind of where my mind is with this, just having Jim, I do like the adopt a tennis court, a tennis court or pickleball. That seems like a one-off. Maybe you do it to three, or like, these are the numbers that, you know, you get a hash out uh with him. But it's just a revenue stream that we're missing out on, that I think, and it can be done tastefully and tactfully that um that's an overburden the areas around, because, you know, that's kind of my thought on that. Um the uh short-term rentals, I know uh during my first three years on the select board, it was just Airbnb, Airbnb update on the agenda, like future agendas every single time. And I just wondered what was happening, because we never did anything with it. Um so it turns out we are getting money from that, though.
Rooms tax is through Airbnbs, because we don't have hotels in Reading.
Correct.
So that that the income that's on the memo there is what we've seen in the last five years. So fairly small amounts of revenue, but we do receive some.
I mean, seventeen grand is, in twenty-five is pretty big. I would have thought you were.
It started off very, very small. I mean, so we've grown a lot. I mean, and it does look like if we wanted to go to town meeting and increase what we, what the rate is, because we're at four percent to six, that would help us. But of course, we need a town meeting vote to do that as well. So that's something we should be.
Something to discuss, yes, going forward. And then lastly, the ADU thing, um I wasn't sure how, because I know they're coming, what, January or whatever. I'm not sure how that's being taxed. You kind of outlined it now. So essentially, if the assessor's office says my property is a million, and then I add on some ADU thing, now that's going to be a hundred, two hundred grand or something, whatever nominal figure that is, then it's taxed on that, too. So if everybody in Reading got an ADU, we'd be flush with money. Is that the case?
There'd be a lot of new growth that we haven't seen.
Yes.
It would be false, mostly false.
Yes. So those are my comments on that. So I'll open up to the board if you have any ideas, thoughts, criticisms, et cetera.
Melissa's her hand up.
I just.
Right, it's Karen first, and then you.
That's all right.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to, I I'm not really sure how I feel about the signs. I think that would take a lot of work, because I think that we would have to be very careful about the businesses that we allowed. You want it to be appropriate. Um so I'm not really sure how I feel about that yet, but I think that I would like to get more information. I appreciate the information that Jane brought tonight. I do like the idea of the sponsorship of the field or, you know, courts or whatever. I think that could be a great way to bring in some money. Um but I did, more more importantly, I do really like the idea of, um or I would like to look into this um short-term rental tax. I think that we could increase it, and I would really love to hear more about what scenarios we could use the three, additional three percent, because we have the Affordable Housing Trust um committee that we just formed. And I mean, to allow thirty-five percent of the fees to go to that um trust, I think, would be really helpful for that committee um and kind of give them a cash flow. Also, I'm wondering how we manage Airbnb or VRBO or whatever it is in town. Do people have to come to the town hall to get permits? Like, are we managing that, or are people just kind of off on their own doing it?
I didn't get that. Could you try again?
Okay. Male merchant of Siri has no clue. Uh just.
I've heard that in order to do um that with your home, Kevin McCarthy just told this to me. Um before they'll allow you to do it, you have to register with the state. So the money, they take the money from the state, and then the state sends it to us.
Um and some communities, um, Mr. Chairman, some communities, they have a particular, uh, you know, like on the Cape, for instance, regulations that they do for short-term rentals, because there are many hotels. So that's, we don't necessarily need to go down that road, but they they do register, so that's how the um the revenue comes in, that's the state law. And that's how we're.
Got it.
Our piece, um our revenue is coming in from the state, not directly to the town, uh from.
Got it, okay. Yeah, that makes sense. Yeah, we don't have nearly the amount that someplace like the Cape has. But I definitely think it would be interesting for us to look into increasing that percentage and also looking into the three percent that could go into the thirty, to the Affordable Housing Trust. I think that would be a great revenue source for that committee.
Okay. Thanks, Melissa. Anyone else? Karen?
Um yeah, that's interesting to us. Uh thank you for that data on the short-term rentals. That's interesting. It is growing. And um my impression of I, we, I don't know who put that agenda item that sat there. And but I think at the time it went on, some communities were experiencing a boom, and it was a real issue. For us, it just, it's been a slow increase, so it's never been a high priority. Um with the ADUs, you know, by right, allowed to everyone in Reading, that that could be, that could end up being a significant change to this community in the coming years. And um, you know, maybe as a future agenda item, I'd I'd be interested in knowing. I feel like we've been a leader in this area, because a lot of folks didn't even allow them, and we already did. But I'm wondering whether um we're going to have to spend time adjusting our regulations. I mean, so the state is like, you can't say no, but and but but within that, they have their own dimensional requirements and things like that, so. But yeah, I'd be interested in in exploring um and getting input from town meeting on whether we'd like to um maybe increase that. That's not a bad idea. Um I am interested on the advertising versus sponsorship. You know, I do think of the Amesbury um Senior Center, because there was a lot of sponsorship of certain rooms, which applied to me donations, which donations is not revenue per se, but donations pay for things one way or another. So um a sponsorship model might be, there's different forms it could take. We're building two new buildings. Um the schools, I think, I don't know what they're doing now. The scoreboard used to regularly be advertisements, full of paid advertisements to anyone who wanted to. Nobody was out there per se. They were just like area businesses and, and Wilmington had one too. So I don't know if they do that anymore. I think they stopped it. So I don't, I'm not as familiar, but they were doing that anyway. Just recently as like three years ago. The other thing, um, we have an upcoming operational meeting with Burbank Ice Arena. And when I go to other communities, you met, you guys mentioned sports facilities. And I think that is an area where I often see, you know, advertisements. Whether it's on the back of T-shirts or it's hanging on a fence. So that's certainly something we could talk with them. I've brought it up with them before. And it, it could still be, um, they're a five oh one C, so it's still gonna be a donation, which helps offset their rent operations and helps make sure we get rent payments, which is another area that we could talk about, how we increase our revenue coming in. It's just making sure that, you know, people take obligations or lease payments seriously and, and that's something that we can plan on and budget for every year. So, so I'm open to further discussions on this. Thank you for putting this on the agenda.
Karen, anything?
I agree with Melissa on the sponsorship and Karen, I'm not sure I'm a fan of the signs hanging off fences. I think it does detract from the, from the boards and the boosters and things like that. But I do think it's worth looking into, but I'm not sure I would want anything hanging on the fences at the sporting events.
Carlo?
I'm good. All good comments.
Alright, um, yeah, just food for thought if anyone has any other items also in the future about revenue streams. I didn't think of the sponsorship kind of thing that Jim came up with. So maybe that's a happy compromise in all of this that, you know, we could do something like that. But, uh, through that model, obviously, we'd still have to approach the school committee on, on their portion, right? So I, I know they do the one-day thing for, like I said, the football games. And I know the announcer mentions all of them, uh, at least once during the game. But yes, something tastefully tactfully, maybe we, you know, two or three people get something for a season there at some set rate or whatever, something like that. But that's obviously in their purview, but I think, you know, we kind of have to be on the same page. So.
Alright, thank you. I have a lot of good notes that I took and, um, we'll look into some of the sponsorship piece a little more. I'll ask council to dig in there and, um, and, and we'll do, we'll do our homework and get back to you very soon. Thank you.
Anyone from the public on ways to increase revenue? Scouts, anything? No? We're all good? Alright. Anyone online? Maddie?
Nobody online.
Alright, then we will move on to public hearing, eight oh five. Uh, discussing vote on the transfer of the all-alcohol license. Karen, do you have a?
To, to the inhabitants of the town of Reading. Please take notice, the select board of the town of Reading will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, August fifth, twenty twenty-five at seven P M. In the select board meeting room at Town Hall, sixteen Lowell Street, Reading, Mass. Or also available remotely on Zoom to act on a transfer of license application for an annual all-alcohol restaurant license located at forty-eight Walkers Brook Drive, Reading, Mass. From Anthony's Coal Fired Pizza LLC, comma, DBA Anthony's Coal Fired Pizza to Florida Coal Fired Pizza LLC. A copy of the proposed documents regarding this topic will be in the select board packet on the website at www dot readingma dot gov. All interested parties are invited to attend the hearing in person or remotely via Zoom or may submit their comments in writing or by email prior to six P M on August fifth, twenty twenty-five to townmanager@readingma.gov by order, by order of Matthew A. Cronellis, Town Manager.
Thanks, Karen. Who do we have? Matt with us is?
I think there's possibly somebody here from Anthony's, um, maybe on Zoom. Is anybody here from Anthony's Coal Fire Pizza? Either on Zoom or in the room?
Good evening, Elizabeth Pisano. I am counsel for Anthony's Coal Fire Pizza. This application is for a transfer of the liquor license from the current licensee, Anthony's Coal Fire Pizza of Reading LLC to Florida Coal Fire Pizza LLC. The current licensee declared bankruptcy and the applicant is now an affiliate of a successful bidder in a bankruptcy and purchased the three Anthony's Coal Fire Pizza restaurants in Massachusetts. So it's here in Reading. There's one in Littleton and Westwood. So it is, um, three locations that they are acquiring in Massachusetts. The manager record is going to remain the same. All operations will remain the exact same. It's gonna stay in Anthony's Coal Fire Pizza. You will not notice any changes in the restaurant. All operations will be the exact same. Um, just new ownership taking over from, uh, bankruptcy. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Board members, anything? Anyone from the public? Seeing nobody. I just had, uh, one statement. Mark is no longer here to give his alcohol, um, kind of, uh, lecture, but reminder that if the Reading Select Board takes, um, alcohol and liquor licensing seriously here in the town. Chief Clark and everything has signed off on this, so I think Liz, if you could just bring it back to the owners of Anthony's, et cetera, and just let them know that, you know, uh, we, we strive to have a hundred percent here in Reading. Unchecking my Ds and all that, so. If you could. Perfect. Alright, Karen, can I get a motion to close the meeting?
Motion to close the public hearing regarding the transfer of all alcohol restaurant liquor license for Florida Coal, Florida Coal Fired Pizza LLC, DBA Anthony's Coal Fired Pizza.
Seconded by Karen. Any discussion? Seeing none. Roll call, Melissa?
Yes.
Carlo?
Yes.
Karen Herick.
Yes.
Karen Rose Gillis. Taylor, yes. Five zero. Alright, so then back to the regular, um, vote. Any other discussion? Public, anything? Nope. Alright, Karen, take a motion.
Move that the board approve the transfer of the all-alcohol liquor license for Florida Coal Fired Pizza LLC, DBA Anthony's Coal Fired Pizza, located at forty-eight Walkers Brook Drive.
Seconded by Karen Herick. Any discussion? Seeing none. Melissa?
Yes.
Carlo?
Yes.
Karen Herick.
Yes.
Karen Rose Gillis.
Yes.
And Chris Haley Lewis. Thank you, Liz.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
A white pizza that Anthony's has is great. Well, it's expensive.
Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Thank you. You too.
Alright, we will now move on to eight fifteen, discuss forming a water and sewer rate committee, page thirteen in the packet. Jane, I guess you put some info in here.
I sure did. We put in, I'm gonna look over my shoulder because I just crashed my machine. Thank you. Um, so we put some, uh, sample, samples of what other towns do, right? So you have Canton, which has kind of a large committee, uh, made up of different groups. We have the one from Swampscott, which is two residents, um, a representative select board, the assistant town manager of operations, uh, DPW admin, and the assistant town manager, A and F. And then you have Wakefield. Um, I think you had specifically asked for what Wakefield does. So, uh, this is a larger scope that Wakefield does than what we're looking at. So that is what we put together. We would recommend, uh, I don't actually have a recommendation for you. Liz, if you want to kind of see what the, what the appetite is. Right now, uh, the process is that, um, the town manager works with the CFO and the DPW director to develop the rates that they, they bring forward to you with the help of, right now, an outside consultant that we work with. So, uh, speaking entirely for myself and not for any of my colleagues, we just want to make sure that the board is streamlining and not adding to, to work. Making sure, you know, thinking carefully about who you would want to have on a water and sewer rate committee with staff guidance or staff assistance. Um, and then how, how would the board leverage that knowledge? You're all pretty educated in how the rate system works right now, so what are you looking for? What would the scope be? So that's, again, we're here to start the conversation. Is that helpful?
Yes.
Okay.
I wouldn't say I'm an expert after, you know, four or five years here. I learned something every single time that the water thing gets brought up. And then obviously Paul Silva bringing, bringing his expertise that he had not in water, just in, he's an actuary or whatever, I think he is. So I know this was brought up maybe a year or two ago and then Karen Rose Gillis, who brought it up right in the beginning, like May or something. So that's kind of where we're at. Just want to see if we want to do this, what the composition would be, what are your, you know, goals to get out of this? Obviously save money for everybody, but, um, is there anything else that you want to add or how do you?
I definitely don't think it's gonna be, in my head, as large a scope as the other towns. I think it was more, um, when I was working through the water rate information, I consider myself fairly bright and I was combining a lot of different spreadsheets from different people. And I think to kind of make it easier for us and the public to understand, like how we come to these decisions. Like, we may have a lot of free, free cash in these accounts, but there might be a reason. You know, three years down the road, they may not know what we plan on borrowing for A, B, C, D. And the public may not know that. So if we're gonna keep the rates the same or raise it one percent, I think it would be nice to be able to present them with a really easy to read summary of why we came up with that. You know, from my experience this year, I, I don't want to say I got thrown into it, but right away you're going through these discussions and I'm kind of like, wait a minute, what are you talking about? And I have to imagine that most residents feel the same way. So I think we're very lucky that we have Paul, because he's incredibly well-versed in this topic. And I'm sure he'd love to share all his information with everybody. But I think just a couple of times a year, kind of connect with some people that know what they're talking about to kind of say, we, I know the information's in town meeting packet, but for the people that are not on town meeting, that are still interested in finding this out, I think if we can make it easier for them to understand and not have to go dig for the information, that's more my goal. And for me too, because I spent a lot of time learning about it. And now that I know about it, I'm still gonna have to spend as much time each year figuring it out. So I think it would be nice to have somebody, um, kind of narrow the scope down of the review and figure it out. So that we're being a little bit conservative for the future and not say we're not gonna have zero increases for years. And it sounds great when you hear that, but the analysis is, well, if you pay twenty bucks a year, we're still gonna have good free cash and twenty bucks a year really isn't that much in the whole scope of the world. It is for some, yes, but for, for some of us, it's not. So that's pretty much my reasoning behind, behind it.
Yeah, no, I, I would agree that, um, the education around it is, definitely has to be, um, advertised more, but I did, uh, you know, we kept the rate zero and then went down on two or whatever, like the first time forever. And we still got criticism online. And I was like, are you aware that like, oh, rent is going up like eight, ten percent? Nothing goes down or stays at zero, two thousand twenty-five. So it's kind of hard to, for the public to see we have all this money, but not realizing that, you know, in three to five years and follow-up years, the rates would have to go up significantly if we didn't do what we did. So it's a combination of having a, you know, not a committee per se. I like the smaller thing that Jane had mentioned, not the full-blown Wakefield. But just something out there that, um, lets the public know that we are paying attention and we're not just, you know, throwing a dart at a board and just coming up with whatever we, what we want. But I will say, I, I think that we have to readjust our peer communities. Cause I know you, you let off the Canton on there and I was like, you had three hundred other towns in Massachusetts and, and you picked a fantastic one, Jane.
I, uh, it's not my fault. Um, no, we had, we had help on picking. Yeah.
Okay.
No, there aren't, not every town does this, right? It's not, it's not all the towns have these. It, it was not like, okay, we just go find a few towns.
So we should run up Canton, is what you're saying?
I'm not saying that. I'm definitely not saying, I think you want to talk about it. Uh, no, I, I'm just teasing. But yeah, there are, there are a few of these committees. We can, we can go out and find more and see what other models they have, but we can create our own. What I'm hearing is, um, you're looking for more public education about how water rates are set. So I'm hearing some of that and maybe some, uh, you know, something that lives on our website that talks more about how that works. So people, when they have questions, can go find it. And, um, that's not like a, just a document you have to hunt for. Like, you know, that's something that we could probably put on the, um, in the public works page. And we can start that work now regardless of what you want to do vis a vis a water and sewer rate committee. But what I'm hearing is we need to have some plain language explanation, um, that's more accessible for people to understand. And I think we can, we can start that work.
I think it's important, you know, Chris Cole had this great spreadsheet of things that are in his dream. You know, the dreams of what are, are gonna happen. And you guys are great at figuring out, well, we can push this off a year or two. But there's a lot of people that have no idea what he has planned two years from now. And sometimes you feel caught off guard. It's like, well, why didn't I know about this before? Of course I want to have them pave this, or of course I want, you know, the town to do this. But if you don't know about it well enough in advance, you don't know, well, we've got the savings and we're gonna spread it out over this amount of years. And it's very complex. And so I think if we can have like a living document online to help with that, to see, these are technically not nitty-gritty detail, but to kind of just give people a heads up of, you know, these are our plans of where we see our town going for maintaining and repairing. And then, then the desires and wishes too. So I think that that would be helpful for people to realize, well, maybe we don't need a zero percent increase. Maybe we'll do a half a percent increase and just kind of keep the savings going, as they say.
Alright, thank you. It's great feedback. Appreciate that.
Melissa, your hands up?
Yes, thank you. So I agree. I think we need some, um, education. And I don't, it's not just for the public, it's for the board. I, I agree with Karen. I had a really hard time understanding this process and the ins and outs of how these rates get set. Paul Silva is a wealth of information. Um, I didn't realize, as I'm sure many of us didn't, that the more water our town uses, all residents, the cheaper our water will be in the long run. And that's huge and something that many people do not understand. So I really like the idea of, um, the Swampscott advisory. It's small, it's not too big. And it just, I think it's, in my head, it's just a board that meets a couple of times a year. You know, talks to, you know, Chris Cole and, and Sharon and kind of gets feedback from that. And then just kind of makes a recommendation to us and gives us a little more feedback. And then they'll have the understanding of what Chris may have in the plans or what, uh, you know, because that money can only be used for water and sewer plans. So i- if there's something that needs to come up, it would be good for us to all to understand that. So I think that it would be, um, a great committee to have. And, you know, just to help educate everyone, not just regular residents, but us as well. And I think that, um, you know, maybe trying to get something together for next year's water discussion would be helpful. And can this save us money on a consultant, is my other question? Cause not to be frank, but I wasn't a fan of the consultant that we've used the last couple of years just because I felt like he wanted to push those numbers without considering other options. So I, maybe, you know, we can save a couple bucks there.
Thanks, Melissa. Karen?
I, I like the idea of, um, um, getting this committee together in advance of our rate decisions. So maybe that, um, you know, maybe it's a spring thing where if Chris is, Chris is willing to help, uh, be on that initiative and get them together. And yeah, a couple of meetings to digest this current state of affairs, any updates for MWRA. Um, I, I don't agree that we don't need that, um, consultant, because these are very complex spreadsheets. He's the only one who can answer questions very quickly for us. So it's not necessarily expertise that we're retaining, um, in-house. So I wouldn't necessarily agree with that assessment. But perhaps his time is better spent with the advisory committee helping them. I, I would love to see a streamlined presentation with some feedback from residents in advance of, uh, our annual water and sewer rate discussion. That, that would be helpful, I think. I, I think it's hard for us to digest all of that in this kind of a setting. And it can be a little easier as a committee over a couple of, a couple of nights in advance.
I think it, hey, that makes sense, um, but more to the point that I, I think that in advance, the meeting should happen. But I think it's gonna happen a couple of times throughout the year, even before that. Obviously it'll pick up steam as the, the, uh, the day approaches. But I think that to get what we want out of this, it has to, I'm not saying, I'm not throwing out eight times, but something. But I think that to get what we want out of this, it has to, I'm not saying, I'm not throwing out eight times, but something maybe six hour-long meetings or something like that on a smaller committee that kind of hashes out a couple things and scales it out and sees what Chris has and because I didn't know about that till Karen just said. So I know there's the road paving plan that Ryan has, but I didn't know this water spreadsheet thing that you just mentioned. So like, these are the things that we have to know about. Because we just see the numbers and we're just saying one, two, three percent or whatever, like more, way more than that goes into it, so.
Okay, good feedback. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else from the public want to comment on water? Potential water committee? They want to discuss communication tracking. Anyone online? Maddie, is it just Melissa now at this point?
Uh, there's no one with their hand raised online.
Okay, okay. Um, so no vote needed on that. So eight twenty-five, discuss communication tracking methods. And that is page nineteen in the packet. If you could bring that up, Maddie, the little spreadsheet page that we had in here. So this got brought up kind of quasi changing email and packets, whole policy spiel to kind of coming back to just email tracking the resident who sends something in that requires, you know, some kind of interaction from Matt or Chris Cole or anybody. So if you want to take over Matt on that?
Just a couple of things. Maddie, if you could put that part of the packet up on the screen, that would be great. So this was something that was done under Bob Lee, the show when he was the manager. So he in continued a little bit under Fidel, but he quickly seemed like he didn't like using it for whatever reason. So the the spreadsheet we have is one that I think that Bob and Fidel had started. And, you know, we had put some, some of the recent emails in there as well, just to see what it would look like. So we can, we can start using this and start filling this in and giving reports to the select board. Before we did though, I wanted to make sure that it was something that you were satisfied with, that you didn't want any changes to it. I mean, it's it's pretty bare bones. It's just on Excel. There's no software involved in it. And it's just simply keeping track of those emails that come in and what the resolution is. A lot of times I'll just go and see the emails because I'm on all your email list and I'll handle those myself. Or, you know, Jane Will is on Budsmann, or if it involves a department, TPW, they would be involved. We always get back to the residents. They don't always love the answer, but you know, the answer is what the answer is. So I think we could, if you have any changes to this, we'd like to know. If you want to use something totally different, that's fine too. But we thought this was a good starting point since Bob had used it and Fidel had used it for a short period of time, so.
Thanks, Matt. Board members?
Yeah, um, this seems nineteen nineties to me. Um, I I I I thought it was incredibly awkward before and if it's in Google Docs, at least you can have shared access to it. And I I'm gonna, I think you've made a comment to me and and when I was secretary, you're in a little bit of a, I don't want to create extra email, but we know you're seeing it. But the secretary doesn't always know if you felt like you could respond. I mean, sometimes yes, no, and I think you mentioned that you're like, I'm not sure if anything was done. So if it's, if it's a way that select board members or at least the secretary could do a quick check, that that might be a a helpful addition. Without creating like more communication loops because sometimes that's not very effective either.
Right, okay.
And I think we talked about using C Click Fix as well. Is that not an option?
Yeah, always. You know, we always recommend C Click Fix. That is software that we pay for that works very well. The majority of our TPW complaints come in that way, you know, so we, you know, we do tell, we do ask people to use that, but some people feel like.
Oh, what I mean, but would you want to use it for this?
We we could. When I was doing the on Budsmann job early on especially, I used to use it just to log those, you know, calls or complaints or whatnot. So we could use that instead and generate a report from that. I don't know why, you know, that wasn't done with Bob and Fidel, but they thought at that time a spreadsheet was going to do the trick, you know?
Well, when we weren't really, my perspective is Fidel was like a huge fan of like they outgrew C Click Fix and they spent money on something else, but he was a huge fan of it. So he came in all excited about it and then that's when we actually started using it more for whatever reason and realizing that, oh, you know what? Yeah, we invested in the software and like we're using like a tiny fraction of it. So it, I mean, it might be easier for you. And if you're already used to doing it, why reinvent the wheel?
Yeah, we could.
If you have experience doing it.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's something we can do and just do it on secret fix and then you have access to that and you can see it or we can send reports or whatever, rather than keep a spreadsheet.
It's, um, it's easy enough that we could add in a report area for select board communicate, like a separate piece that would be internally accessed, but we could then easily tags in and run reports on it and we can have service delivery, you know, uh, guidelines. So this gets back to in a day or whatever. The system tracks it itself. So once you enter.
You're doing this by hand. So what I, so what I'm saying is saying it's awesome that you're doing this. You're putting the effort in to track it. Just move it to C Click Fix rather than do it here. And that would be my proposal.
Okay.
That's.
That's, that's something we.
That just seems very labor intensive, putting it into an Excel.
Okay, yeah, no, it is. Um, but, you know, we were asked to produce it, so we did.
So I guess from the secretary's point of view, and I know I've raised it with a couple of people, because I tend to want to help people really quickly.
Yeah.
I don't know if you've figured that out about me or not. So sometimes I've had to hold myself back because I'm letting other people respond, but I, you know, mine is a generic, thank you so much. Thanks for calling, you know, whatever. And then I've always assumed that if it's something super important, that you've seen it, you're going to deal with it, you're going to, and I've seen some of those. So as far as me or the secretary from whatever, will I have to do anything in Quick, Click Fix? Click Fix?
No.
I'm just continuing to do what I do now.
Right, yeah, no, wouldn't be added extra work on this secretary. So you would continue to get the emails if you wanted to respond and say, thank you for your email. That's what a response, that's fine. But we would pick that up off of the email and put it into C Click Fix and then, yeah.
So as far as, you know, the hundreds of responses that we have emails we may have gotten for whatever thing we, you know, RCTV or whatever was before that. Is that something that's going to go in the Quick Fix?
Well, when I talked to, when, when Chris and I discussed it, I mean, those are, a lot of those are like form emails on, you know, a certain topic that are not really so much action items. So those, I don't think we would put into the scene. Because there's really nothing to do. They just want you to be aware of how they feel. So I mean, my preference would be not to, because that would be more way going to, because sometimes we get two, three hundred emails.
Right, and it would be a lot of, it would clutter up the mailbox, clutter up the box. Not that their comments aren't important.
No, 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 we, we read them all, but we can't, you know, we and we respond, I I try to respond. I know the the select board responds saying, thank you for your email and whatnot. But there's really no action item associated. And so we don't really have.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you, um, to Ms. Rose Gillis, very formal. We could also offer on C Click Fix a, you know, communicate with the select board option. And so people right now tend to go through the website and click that link and you all receive that on an email distribution list. We don't have a service request for the select board on C Click Fix. Food for thought. So then everything's already in C Click Fix versus anybody having to put it in a C Click Fix. So you right now would get, you get a, you, people communicate with you as they can. We do try to have an ethic of we try to communicate with people in every way that we can, every time that we can. It's a try have a little rhyme. But, you know, that's an option. We could also put a service request on C Click Fix. And it would, you'd all get an email, just like you do now, but you would be able to, you would enable it. So you could go in and see a follow-up also. So I'm happy to sit down and show anybody what C Click Fix looks like on the backend as well. Anytime.
The volume of C Click Fix right now.
Depends on what the problem is in the community. I'll give you, for instance.
Break your email system.
It might, um, if you, when we had so many issues with our trash.
Trash, right?
We asked the public to please document their address and stuff with in C Click Fix.
Yep.
Because we can easily run reports of it and absolutely the resident, reading residents are fantastic and rose to that occasion just beautifully and blew it up. But it was great because we could print that out and our crews could address it where we were addressing issues. We could give that to our vendor and be like, you know, you're all, this is what we're, we're getting back and people were very responsive and, and, you know, people have seen that we are responsive to C Click Fix because it goes directly to supervisor for each person that's doing the thing. But what we do on the backend is we reassign it to, so if it's going to parks, actually doesn't belong with parks, it belongs with recreation or whatever the issue might be. So it goes to the right person and we can have a conversation in that space as well to kind of figure out what's happening here and then address it appropriately if it needs that. So food for thought. You don't have to decide. Happy to sit down with secretary or any member of the board and show them what the backend looks like. Okay?
For me, I have an entirely different take than what everyone has just said. Everyone's over complicated the entire thing. It's basically basic. What we have on the screen now is the prior three people that have sent stuff that is pertinent, that is actionable items. I would not want to use C Click Fix for, let's say, the email that came. Now I'm going to create, this has to go into the packet, but it is what it is. The email that came in today about advertising for the, the shred, the peak RMLD. That is not a C Click Fix item to me. That is, that is, C Click Fix is a pothole, a overflowing trash thing on Avon Street. Any one of those actual actionable items. What I see is the Excel thing does look basic, but it allows us as a board to know that Ed, Thomas, Mary and Julie have all been responded to on a particular item. Because if they don't reply all, then I have no way of knowing that Ed, Thomas, whatever, going to reply to this. And therefore I want to know, is Matt keeping up on it? It's not just me. Carla would want to know that. Obviously, um, Karen Rose Gillis is replying to everybody and saying, you know, thank you for whatever, but like, is this being taken care of? I know the Ed one has been taken care of, but that's because we're at least me is on the email for what happened with it. We don't have to go down the road of using C Click Fix for all this. And and like, that's why I would say, how do we handle the one that came in today with RMLD? And, uh, doing that? What, what are we supposed to do? Does it go on the Excel spreadsheet? C Click Fix or we do nothing with it and Karen says thank you? Like, that's a prime example of a quasi maybe actionable, not really. Like, what are your thoughts, Matt?
On, on that one, I'm not sure what you could do because it's really more of an RMLD issue. It was about the shred the peak, right? Yes, yeah. So, I mean, that one, we could respond to say, thank you for your email. It's been forwarded to RMLD. I think RMLD board was on that email as well. So that one's a little bit different. That's more in line of what those sort of those form emails that we get on a certain hot issue.
Literally hot, but it is. It's, it's only a single email on it. It's not, you know, multiple people didn't send the same, same thing. It's more of, I I'm thinking this, how it is up there for actionable items that we know that are being taken care of. You know what I mean? I I don't think we have to go down the road of putting everything in here and coming up with the contact the select board on C Click Fix. And I just think that like, it's only a couple of items that Matt's going to be adding. So unless we start creating chaos and people want to add more items, but like.
So I guess I'm confused. I thought that they said that they could enter the information into Click Fix on their end. Just as if they were putting it in there and then they could print us a report and that's what could tell us.
As long as the report, as long as the report is being sent weekly, like, uh, Chief Nelson notes kind of thing. And, um, the public has access to it. So people know it's not duplicative, that, you know, roadwork part two or whatever, it's not really descriptive, that's press code or wherever it is. But, you know, to kind of alleviate future questions from other people, be like, oh, somebody's already asked. This is, this is how it's being handled. That's kind of what I'm envisioning.
Okay.
And then the board gets to know as well as the public. I don't think we need our own logins.
So just a, their fine question then, um, it's an interesting point. So, um, okay, so we get an email from a resident and let's say they, it is tracked that we've received the concern into C Click Fix. Then we have that resident's email. So suddenly they get notified from C Click Fix and they know you're working on, like, it depends on that. You may need to call them and all that stuff, but is that also a way that the resident also gets feedback? Oh, guess what? A ticket was created for you and C Click Fix, we're on it. Like, in addition to this report, in addition, I think getting it weekly is a great idea. Like, yep, these are, these are, the residents are being responded to. But I was wondering, so if you're putting it in C Click Fix, then they can also get a response as well.
If they sign up for C Click Fix, yeah, we could, so.
Only if they started on C Click Fix. We can't add it.
If they sign up and they put it there. But we could, like, we can use it as a tracking device. Like I said, I used to do that all the time. Um, and it's, and it's, it fits the bill. Um, it's not, you know, it's not, it's developed to do more. Like Chris said, it's more elaborate than that, but we could use it for that rather than using a spreadsheet. It's very, which, whatever you want. We could do the spreadsheet too, either way, or we can do a different spreadsheet.
I'd have to see an example of what
Okay.
these last three would look like, kind of, you know what I mean?
Okay, yeah. Yeah, we, we can do that, yeah.
Melissa, did you have anything? You're not on the screen.
Um, no, everything that I was going to ask was kind of covered because I was kind of worried about how that information was going to get to C Click Fix. So I think I understand how it will work.
And then, like, residents' information isn't being shared beyond what's available in C Click Fix, right? I don't think names get put up, but addresses or something does, like on their weekly C Click Fix. Like if you go on the C Click Fix for Reading, you can see like how I just explained to you that we get to see the eighty-five different potholes and other things that people are taking care of. It's fantastic. Like, seeing an outline like that, just as long as whatever information that you're putting on there is not, you know, deviating from what they send an email in, you know?
Yeah, no, we can, we can summarize the email and say it's been, yeah, so it's bare bones. We won't add all sorts of other stuff in there, you know, that wouldn't be relevant. Or would be personal.
Okay.
Yeah. Anyone else? Give you some examples, um, anyone from the public? Are we shaking your head? No.
Scouts have nothing on this.
Every, every opportunity.
Yeah.
Nobody online, Maddie? All right, we will move on to select wood liaisons on reports. I don't care. You know, Karen, you need to go first and then we'll take fifteen minutes.
Well, I'm not joking, but the public really does want to know what we're doing. Just letting you know. I don't have to go first.
Oh, you can go first. Go ahead.
So I met with Ace twice since our last meeting. The first meeting was a debrief from the celebration of Juneteenth and planning for the next steps. And the second meeting in July was, um, they, um, the agenda was working on potential programs for long-term plans, um, discussing financial information gathered from town resources, uh, determine next program timeframe and outline, uh, discussions of participation in the Fall Street here. And, um, discussions regarding potential reach out to Karen Russell, her engagement with her. I had my June twenty-eighth office hours and July twenty-eighth office hours. June twenty eighth happened to be during Porch Fest, so I was at the library. So I got to listen to some great music, had a few visitors in between. And then I had my most recent ones at President's Co. down on Main Street. Um, I really love the space. I encourage everyone to go participate in any of her events. I went to game night on Friday. Distracting from my thing. It was fun. Uh, my next office hours are August eleventh from twelve to two here. July seventh, I met with the Reading Housing Authority. The Reading, the residents of Tannerville were giving early input into the feasibility study for Tannerville property. Very, very early stages of looking into future development of it. Um, the residents gave some comments about what they'd like to see and feel about the, if it, if it does get re, um, redeveloped. They discussed perhaps having Tannerville participate in Porch Fest next year, which I think would be a really good thing for them. I'm working with a resident named Bob on updating a newcomers type information packet. He, they had a new resident who knew nothing about the area and he came up with the suggestion. So I offered to work with him on developing something. So I talked to some people at the library as well. I'm going to meet with him the next week or so. And, um, Eastern Gateway Steering Committee meeting, Andrew provided an update since that meeting. And, um, then there was a forum the other day. So I'm hoping that we'll get a debrief at our next meeting on the forum, which happens later this month. I went to a council and aging meeting. I went to a council and aging meeting, very engaged group as always. They voiced their concerns and feeling they're being left out of schematic design, operations and programming, but they're going to get their voices heard as always. They want to make sure that there's spaces dedicated for them at the recalc. Jenna was in attendance and provided a lot of information to the group on the status of the very, very early discussions on operations and things like that, so. And then I met with the food pantry, Simone. We spoke about, we spoke about the slate uptick in participants. Assorted immediate needs at the pantry such as toilet paper and paper towels. If anyone's interested in doing a, a, not a fundraiser, but a donation raiser, please, you know, call them and let them know. You're more than welcome to bring stuff to my office hours if you like. I can bring it by. They, we talked briefly about every options that might be available for some people that can't get out. They also would like to come to a future meeting to talk about their interest in moving into the Pleasant Street Center when it becomes available. So they kind of want to start those discussions. So I'm going to, we'll talk about that as the agenda part. And they invite anyone from the select board to come visit and see their space, no more than two people, please, to make sure it's out of meeting. And look at their space, talk about expansion, and that's it.
Thanks, Karen. Next, Karen.
Okay, great. I've continued to participate in the MMA fiscal policy committees. Those are once a month. Not quite as crazy now that most of the budget work has been done. I did participate in the MWR A call that we had. I appreciate them including us so that we could listen to the board discuss the options for Reading and how much we paid in and their thoughts on where we are. And I thought there was some positive discussion coming out of that possible movement for Reading. So I, I know Matt is taking the charge on that and I look forward to updates. And I know, I appreciate that they welcomed us and listened to us and took our request seriously. So that's good, so. Keep that up. I attended the finance committee where we talked about improving communication with, between the finance committee and the select board on key things. You know, if, if, you know, if we need to talk about, start talking about if and when we need an override, like, how are we going to do that? I don't believe override is mentioned in either the select book hand, select board handbook or the finance committee handbook. But it sort of seems logical that we might work together on that. So just kind of laying the groundwork. And, oh, so one item that came up that I'd like to talk about for a future agenda item. So town meeting approves foreign articles. And the wording is always, let's use, we'll use a field house floor. We will spend, we approve spending up to X dollars. There's always contingencies built in there, in that number. And there's a trust. There's a trust from town meeting that bids will go out. And, and the town will not spend more than necessary. So, and now that we're in a more of a fiscal, fiscally challenging economic state right now, we discussed the bids that came back on the high school floor, came back a couple hundred thousand dollars below that threshold. But the department had requested that our town accountant borrow the full amount, just in case. Not everybody on the finance committee was comfortable with that. Because again, there's this trust. Look, you guys, I know this is a big, and that was a big expensive item. Where, where you're authorizing up to this and we're looking to, you know, watch your pennies and hopefully you won't need that much. So I'd love this board, future agenda items, to really talk about, you know, policies that when bids come in and they are lower and they meet our needs, we're honoring that trust with town meeting. So just, just a future agenda item. But that's what we talked about, the finance committee. I did attend the RMLD audit meeting. That was their regularly scheduled meeting. And asked the questions about our payment, which was down slightly this year. So, so they do publish all their annual reports on their website. So they didn't have answers for me in the meeting, but I went and looked. And so the, the reality is kilowatt sales actually were upward trending as we were into COVID. And, and we thought that was the new reality. Yay, we're selling more electricity and that formula is designed that they sell more kilowatt hours, we get more money. But what looks like it happened in the, over the last three years is as people went back and out into the world and we stopped sitting around in our houses, like, online, that we stopped buying kilowatts here. So kilowatts are slightly trending down. It's a three-year average. So that's why our number was down slightly. Luckily, it's not a lot. But, you know, but our electric department needs to sell lots of kilowatt hours. So, you know, they, I'll be reminding them. We, we love it when you sell more kilowatt hours and, you know, they do know they need to do that, but that just required going through their annual reports to see that reason. So that's, and they, they do send out a letter telling us what our payment is going to be every year, but I think it only went to you. And I asked them to just send it to the select board at readingmasc.gov email so that we all get it. And, and it's just easier to communicate that way. So they'll, they agreed to do that. Let's see. I attended a full day seminar on planning and zoning, which I thought was particularly, as hosted by Massachusetts, the Greater Boston Board of Railtors. So it was held down the street because they're located here in Reading. And that was great. As I know, we're talking about beginning our master planning. And I know somebody had a question is, you know, why would you put a railtor on the master planning committee? Well, because we understand about zoning and building. And so I wanted to make sure that was still a true statement. So that was terrific and very relevant. Friday night, was it last Friday night? I happened to be notified by a resident that there was a fabulous art show going on next to the Writers Collaborative down on Haven Street. Oh my gosh, this was like an accident. This is like in Reading, there's some serious art in there with some prices, like some big prices. Like this isn't Marblehead, this isn't, this was Reading. And we're, we're at a fabulous, really enjoyable, entertaining art showcase down. I apologize. It is attached to and related to the Writers Collaborative because after you went through the exhibit and the open, opening, if you will, you got to go next door and have a forum with the artists and like hear, you know, how they came up with it and how they do their work. So that was really wonderful. So you can sign up for their newsletter and I'm definitely going to do that because that was just too easy. And I was, you were on vacation. I was like, oh my God, Matt would love to have known about this.
I was sorry to miss that.
Yeah, so they'll be doing more. It was terrific. So that was awesome. And all right, I think that's it. Thanks.
Thanks, Karen. And Anthony is great over there at Writers Collaborative.
Yes, that's it. Thank you. Yep, he's mentioned, he spoke with you.
Yep. Carlo.
My mind's brief. So we had CPA meeting not too long ago and Margaret Moran was nice enough to create a flyer that we went over, like what is CPA? And the benefits and it was a very nice, compact, a lot of information flyer that we kind of tweaked and reworded things and tightened it up. So hopefully at our next meeting, we'll approve it for distribution and maybe put on the, you know, the page, the town page and get it out there more in circulation. So that was a, a good meeting. We had a lot of discussion about the rate again, no phone, no vote yet, but so still going back and forth in that, but we want to kind of, even though it's still a year plus away, we kind of want to let everybody know that this is the number we're going to be looking at. Whether it's one, one and a half, two, three. We all agree it's not going to be three. There's benefits of three, but we're all on the same page pretty much that it's not going to be three. So we're just trying to finalize that and just, you know, every, past some meetings that some of them I did miss because the conflicts was, you know, like Martha from Conservation brought her feedback from Conservation. And then I missed Eric Gaffin's about feedback from Conservation. So I think we're almost done with a different historic and the different members of certain committees bringing back their information to the CPA committee. And I did watch a CPDC meeting, but it was so long. I didn't take good notes. I hung on, I hung on there almost the whole night, but it wasn't anything riveting, but it was a lot of information. School bad, school good, school, schools, essentially.
All right, Melissa. It's getting darker.
Thank you. Yes, summer's been quiet with meetings, which I appreciate. I'm not going to lie. But I've listened into several conservation meetings. A big topic with them is the Purn Row School that is trying to be developed on Main Street. Also listened to some talks about the Farrar School that we also talked to them at our last meeting. We've had five meetings with RCTV regarding negotiations and we have three on the schedule, one of which will be tomorrow. And I do think that the conversations are positive. And I did also attend the MWRA meeting a couple of weeks or maybe a month ago at this point. But I think that's all. Oh, actually, I would like to take a moment if it's okay, Chris. I want to apologize to Matt. I misspoke at the last meeting when we were discussing the Austin Prep parking situation. And I had spoken to Dr. Hickey, who is the head of Austin Prep, and I misunderstood what he had said to me. Matt did not tell him not to come. He told him it was his decision whether he should come or not. And I think Matt may have encouraged him to come considering it was talking about his school. But I'd wanted to take the opportunity to apologize to Matt because I kind of threw him under the bus at that meeting. So I want to say I'm sorry for that.
Thank you. Thank you for clearing that up. I appreciate it.
Yeah, no problem. It was my mistake.
Thanks, Melissa. Yeah, same thing with me. I've enjoyed the quiet time per se that has been happening for the last month. I thought Karen was going to have lots of things that I could just say. I did half of what she said, but you didn't really bring any up. So, no, it's, it's, it's been an enjoyable time and then it's almost back to reality in the next week or two. But I did attend the MWRA thing as well. And like I said, it, it looks promising, hopeful on the, on the smaller figure, but the smaller figure is still better than no figure. So we kind of have to stay on top of that. And I know Matt, you, Chris, Paul, whoever, you know, is going to be advocating. And I, they're giving us the opportunity. And that's all that you can ask for is, you know, being recognized and acknowledged and, you know, they don't have to do it. So it is what it is. So thanks to them. So we'll move on then to future agendas. Anybody have anything? Karen Rose Gillis.
The food pantry would like to come and give an update. So I want to get them on there if possible.
Just coordinate. Matt, I think twenty-sixth is the next meeting, yes?
Twenty-sixth.
So just see if they want to do that. I, I don't think that was bullish per se.
No, let's see. We have it in your, your look ahead.
Yeah, I think it does look pretty bullish.
Well, the ice arena is coming in that night. They, there may be an executive session regarding the side letter that's mentioned.
So maybe September ninth then? So let's see if it's good for them anyway, because if it's not, then it isn't. So. Anything else? Karen, you good? Yes. Are you all set?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm all set. Set it out to the group.
No.
Yeah, I've been, there's a lot of buzz on the street about the ADUs by right. And I am very curious. And this could be like a town manager report item, doesn't have to be aligned on it, but I would love to know how is this going to impact us? Because we already have bylaws on the books and how much effort it might require of planning to, to be in sync with the new law.
They're just getting started with that now, so we'll have something for you. No problem.
All right, thanks.
Carlo, anything?
Nothing I can think of right now.
Melissa?
No, nothing that I can think of at the moment.
All right. I just have a couple that I forgot to put on future agendas. So one is the update from the charter committee thing from, that has to go on the next meeting, I think, right, Matt? You can check with every end to see what the deal is.
Because were you going to have a hearing or something with this?
Yeah, and we have to decide who's going to do what.
Okay.
Okay, so yeah, I think it's the next meeting that that has to go on too.
Okay.
Same as me. The, I can't read my own writing. I don't know what that says. That's a problem. I guess Karen brought it up earlier about the recording from that meeting that happened kind of thing. And Eastern Gateway. So I think, oh, name it. All right, that's what it says. So we have to find out what the deal is with the whole recordings that we have, where they get posted, if the town can host something or, you know what I mean? Because obviously it's not in RCTV's contract to do stuff, but there's lots of other meetings that are being covered that don't end up somewhere. And in order for you to get a copy, you have to public record request it. Which I don't think is, you know, obviously it's a little bit more work on staff or whatever to do something. But the public should end up to public record to request an Eastern Gateway meeting. Because that's, if I wanted to do that right now as a member of the public, that's what I'm going to have to do. We have to fix that. And I, I understand that it's not going to be like these onesie twosie committee meetings or something that happen, like, we have to do something with, you know, that, that makes sense to make it accessible and, you know, kind of have a policy, I guess, around that, what we're going to do. And then I think it briefly got me with the school committee naming scenario that they're having to do. The select board needs to come up with their own naming policy because I don't believe we have one. We've done a couple of things and it's just going to keep, you know, snowballing from here.
Yeah.
So we kind of have to do a naming.
Sorry, I am, I'm going to have office hours in August and September. And August is easy. I am glomming on to a visit by Jason Sarah Lewis and an ice cream social at the Pleasant Street Center. So that'll be August twenty-eighth from twelve thirty, one thirty, before the ice cream social at Sarah Lewis arrives, you know, the warm-up act. And I think the other one is on September eighth. And again, he's also coming back pretty quickly. So, you know.
Do you want to just give them to Mountain Jane so they can make a graphic?
Yeah, I talked with her. I just wanted to make it. So you knew I was like actually doing it.
I have a question. What is a thirty-two Lincoln Street renovation, re-roofing, or building inside?
Yeah, so that one, that, that's something that's going to be for Historic or going before Historic. I think it's another deed restriction. Which building is that, thirty-two Lincoln Street?
I, it's the depot.
Depot. It's the depot. It's the train depot. They weren't putting a roof on there or something like that. And I think that's what it is. So renovations to the roof, so. That's, it is the depot.
We used to vote on that.
Yeah, just, you'd done one, you'd done one a little, a little while regarding the deed restriction that was on there and you have to get required a vote from you. So I'll find out more information. We just got it from Historic, so.
Anyone else? Jane, you look like you have something. No?
I do. I think that we, at some point need to talk about, get a little bit more into the weeds on the future of the Pleasant Street Center. So that we're bringing something forward to town meeting. We were thinking maybe next spring. So that whatever we decide to do with it, and town meeting's approved, whatever that might be, which I have no idea, that if there's a future tenant or if there's anything that needs to happen, they have time, runway to do their plans. So.
Okay.
Other than selling it, this town meeting does not approve a lease, does it? They have to approve a lease?
I, I'm not, I don't know the answer to all these things. So if we want to bring something forward, if there needs to be a town meeting vote, we just need to start that. We need to get a little bit more down the road with what's the appetite of the board for the kinds of use.
No, I, I agree.
Vision. And if there's a procurement process we would undertake, like an RFQ or an RFP or whatever, to get submissions from the, you know, what, what is the board's appetite? Let's start that conversation. So.
All right. Why don't I think there's something else? Nothing? No?
It's only, it's not nine o'clock.
I know. I can't believe the scouts made out on like an early meeting.
Would they like to share with us why they're here?
Yes, I would love to meet the scouts. If it's okay. Or not. Thank you for coming.
You don't have to stand up. Just stay in, stay in.
There are four scouts here.
You don't have to stand up.
My friend Kevin, I'm Tucker, this is Carolyn, this is Margaret.
Welcome. Come anytime.
A trouper you from?
But don't sit in that seat because you can't see anything.
What trouper are you from?
And for a badge or something, do you have to attend a meeting?
We're here for the communications badge.
Oh, perfect.
You have a request from the media would like to take your photo.
You want to be in the newspaper? Yes or no? Perfect. Just sit there like you've been there the whole time. Just sit there like you've been there the whole time.
Communicate with us. Just engage with us. What school do you go to?
Look at them, look at them.
I go to Parker and then he goes to a private school.
Okay, great. Well, my son's an Eagle Scout. Keep going. Yeah, congratulations.
You've got some projects coming up for your Eagle Scouts.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
By the time all these projects are ready, we'll have some trails that need some work.
Evan and Jack, we just had theirs.
So we started at seven thirty-three at Darrell's, then we went to seven twenty-eight at, um, the church, and then, um, and, and that was the end of it.
Seven twenty, just recently.
I know, well, I was a treasurer probably fifteen years, and I had to hand over the checkbook because we're no longer. So, yes, yes.
If you have any questions, you're welcome to contact my office. I'm Jane Wellman, I'm the Assistant Town Manager. I'm the ombudsman and manage communications for the town, so you just drop by, right across the hall.
How was the sound tonight? Were you able to hear us?
Yeah.
Excellent. And I recently upgraded it.
Part of the communication, yes.
Really important.
Well, now we're killing time with scouts. The meetings are running so efficiently. We will, uh, now move on to discuss in voting approving meeting, meeting minutes, July fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, which seem to have got significantly larger, is my first look, but I didn't have any change. I'm good, everybody? All good? Melissa, good?
I'm good.
Okey-dokey. Motion is.
Move to approve the meeting minutes of July fifteenth, twenty twenty-five as presented.
Any discussion? Singun, Melissa?
Yes.
Carlo. Karen Harry.
Yes.
Karen Rose Gillis. You and Chris Haley, yes. Anything else?
Second.
Seconded by Karen, no discussion. Melissa?
Yes.
Carlo. Karen Harry.
Yes.
Karen Rose Gillis. Eight forty-nine. Chris Haley, yes.
Good night, everyone.
Bye safely.